We're live.
All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Gostown School Board meeting. I call the meeting at 6:01. We'll stand and say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so tonight is part two of presentations. We're going to hear from Mountain View and the Gostown High School. Is there anything you want to start before we bring up Mountain View?
No, we're ready to go. We're excited. And Mrs. Milligan is going to come up. And she's got Mrs. Williams here and Mr. Lewis. So I think you guys all going to come up or?
Don't be bored just by yourself. Come on up. Come on up.
I also just want to note Mark and Lindsay were here on Monday representing our team, so.
They sure were.
Yep.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Hello, welcome.
Okay.
All right. I think Mr. Porchat is driving.
Okay, drive. So our 2026 budget is $12,647,314. Our base is for this coming year is $721,422. So the new would be $91,500. And then the requested for the fiscal year 2027 is $12,812,922. That makes a difference of $165,608. I'll talk through our enrollment a little bit. We've had some ups and downs in our numbers. So for this year, I'll just talk about this year and what next year looks like. So for this year in our grade five, we have 202 students. That is a higher number than what we anticipated. And for next year, that drops to 177. But that same group goes into sixth grade, so it's a pretty big chunk of kids. And then in our seventh grade next year, when New Boston comes to us, we have 253 kids anticipated. This year, we have 264. And then for eighth grade next year, we anticipate 264. And then for this year, we have 246. So a total enrollment this year of 894. And for next year, we anticipate 896. Although, as you know, there's a whole bunch of new buildings going up and new places to live. So that sounds like maybe it'll bring us some new children as well. Our projected class sizes for next year. So in our fifth grade, that bubble will move up. So we have 22, we'll have 22 to one next year. In grade five, 25 to one in grade six. 21 to one in grade seven. And in grade eight, 22 to one. So pretty consistent, other than that sixth grade bubble of extra kids. And then if you look at our current staffing, this has not changed much over the last couple of years. We have 40 core content teachers. And this includes four reading teachers, literacy teachers, and our .4 accelerated math teacher. We have 14 special education teachers. Our related service providers. We have a part-time OT and speech and language, a full-time school psychologist, and a part-time ESOL teacher. 13 unified art teachers. And this includes our world language. .5 Title I teacher. And that's in grade five. And 29.5 paraprofessionals, because we have two part-time media center support staff. We have four school counselors, one for each grade level. One librarian, two school nurses, five administrative assistants. And four of those are part-time administrative assistants and five administrators. Our noteworthy changes, none of which I really have a whole lot of control over, but I can walk you through what they are. So our IT replacement equipment is $25,000 increase. And that's the replacement of one computer lab. We have our new digital literacy course. And that's one of our labs in the building and then the other one's in the library. IT equipment lease, that this is for the increase due to higher costs. We replaced our staff laptops this year. And those staff laptops went into a computer cart. The ones from the old ones went into a computer cart. So that now we at least have one computer cart per team in our school, which we're incredibly grateful for. We'd still like more, but we're incredibly grateful. The $11,800 increase is due to our telephone system, the fiber rental, and the internet. And then our math supply, $11,370 increase is for our Big Ideas Math consumables. So again, not things that we really have a lot of say into, but need to happen. And then the rest is around maintenance. And then there is one other piece. So the ground maintenance is $7,500 for an increase of mowing the hills and the lower fields. If you've been to Mountain View, they've done a really nice job on the landscaping there. Before I started, it had gotten pretty overgrown before they put in the work for it. And that also kind of posed a safety risk because you can't see below the bushes to who's coming up the driveway.
Well, and some of what was growing was poison cimac. So we had that as well.
Yeah. Electricity, $5,470 increase. The building for building and repairs. And I will put in, and this is to stay in a painting cycle. I'll put in a plug for our maintenance department. They've done a really, really nice job fixing things that are broken and keeping the building up and running and looking nice. We've painted the hallways, so they match the rest of the building. So I'm really proud of how the building looks right now. But I want to continue to keep it looking nice. Kids take care of a building that they feel like is being taken care of for them. And then the other ask that I have for this year is for math software, $3,600. And this is an increase for IXL. Our fifth and sixth graders currently use this as a supplement to the curriculum. So they're able to get some math and language arts practice. And we currently have seventh and eighth graders that have a content lit area time during the school day that they don't receive some other supports that I, the teachers are looking for some more help in how to plan for those kids. As well as this can be used as a special education supplement and be used during our eighth time to give kids extra practice, which they desperately need. And besides the awesome kids that we have in those pictures up there, that's all I have.
So just, if I could just.
Yeah, sure.
You had asked for two new positions. And I did let the board know on Monday evening that we are in support of those positions. So one is a sixth grade teacher. And the other is another math teacher. Which, as you indicated on your current staffing sheet, we have a .4 math position. And that would be to make that essentially full-time.
Yes, and that would be to cover, well, one, our algebra classes or size is huge. So it would be to cut down on some of those algebra class sizes. And accelerated, for that matter, is really big. And to help support the, some of the classes that we have for kids that take pull-out math.
So I just wanted to let you guys know that we had already mentioned that and that we're in support of those two positions. As I shared with the board, we didn't increase the head count. We're not recommending any new positions. That these would be two repurposed positions that we would dedicate to Mountain View to meet those needs.
Anybody have questions, Tom, Shane? Go ahead.
Thank you. So I had heard at one point that you guys were struggling with technology. And I know you guys want more carts. But I'm just curious, where are we at right now as far as access to technology? Do you feel like we're in a decent spot? Do you, I know you feel like we need more. I get that. But like, as far as, you know, how are kids navigating that? Are things going okay?
Yeah, it's been markedly different. I think when it's still, when kids are testing, it takes those laptops off the floor for other projects or other curriculum pieces. But now they have one per team. So they have, four people have to share a cart with their students, which can get a little tricky. We're working through the bumps of sharing right now. But it's definitely much better. I, and Brian knows this, I support one-to-one devices. And not because I think kids should have their faces stuck in laptops all day. But I think they should be available to kids. So that would be my goal, is to get, and not, and also not one-to-one. Kids would be taking them home. But one-to-one, so that when kids are at school, whatever that use is, that they can have them available for them.
Thank you.
When we look at statewide testing, the middle school gets tested more than any other.
Every grade level.
Every grade level gets tested. And fifth and eighth also get tested in science. So a lot of their spring is without computers, because that's where the computers go to. And then in the fall, you know, I think they do benchmark testing throughout the year as well. So the computers go away at that time as well.
We've also been chosen for NAEP testing every year since the dawn of time.
We've been randomly chosen for NAEP testing for the last 12 consecutive years.
And they're not providing their own laptops. So we have to pull the laptops for that, too.
Yeah, that's a really good point, Mr. Totten. I was going to ask either Josh, anything to add just in terms of the impact? When we start doing all the statewide testing, what does that do?
No, absolutely.
What does that do to classroom teachers who want to use technology?
It makes technology a lot harder to come by. I mean, fortunately, having a laptop, laptop cart per team does make it a little bit easier. Because then, instead of, like in the years past, I would pull every mobile cart. And the library would be taken. There would be no access, other than classes like Tech Ed or Digital Integration, which have computers. There would be no real access to technology. Because for the entire month of April and part of May, we were using all of those devices for state testing. It is a little bit, going to be a little bit easier. We won't have to do that as badly this year. In fact, we were just talking to some of our teams today about what that would look like. But nevertheless, I'm still going to have to take several carts from other teams during that time period and just kind of get creative with how we use those. So that we're not taking the same team's carts the majority of the time.
And I'd add that we are fortunate to have the Promethean boards, who, by the way, are coming to the end of their life, I think. But we have the Promethean board. So some of the curriculum programs that we do have do have technology pieces that it makes it real tough for teachers to teach without. And so they can project their own laptops on the Promethean boards. But kids can't do things on their own on laptops during testing. So it just makes it tricky.
And how long is the testing window?
A month.
April 20th to May 29th. And April vacation is right after the first week.
And that's just state testing?
That's just state testing.
So we also do benchmark testing, as I said, in the fall and some in the winter. And then NAEP testing.
And NAEP.
So Ginny, go ahead.
If we get randomly tested every year for the past 12 years, obviously that's not random. But could we ask them, the state, to randomly send us computers to do that testing on?
We can ask.
Now Ginny, you know I love to blame the state. And far be it for me to ever miss the opportunity to blame the state for something. But this is actually the feds. So this is a, the NAEP is a federal assessment. So this is coming from the U.S. Department of Ed. I have no idea if and when they go away. If NAEP goes away, we don't really know. The thing that's a challenge with this NAEP assessment is we get no local data. We don't know how our kids perform. We don't know how the school performs. We don't even know how the state of New Hampshire performs. So it's hard to make an argument that it's meaningful to our students and to our faculty when we get no information. So you kind of are just doing the test and you put it in a bottle and send it out in the ocean. And you have no idea whatever happens with it.
It seems like that's wasting student learning time.
Well, it is.
If you don't get any feedback of how they're doing, where you should get extra help for the kids or anything. And you're just taking, excuse me, taking up school time to do yet another random testing when we have all kinds of state testing that we're doing. And this just goes to God only knows who. Maybe they're getting information, but it's not helpful to the people that can really help the kids. So can, is there?
I would agree with all of that.
Is there a way you can say to them, you know, unless we get feedback in order to help our kids, this is wasting their learning time so that they can better their scores?
I have, I'm happy to shout that from the mountaintop. However, when you receive federal funds, and I have to sign off on all of those assurances, you have to do this when they knock on the door. I just keep hoping that, just as we're always randomly chosen, that maybe one year, we won't be chosen.
Could you just put that point out, like, this is not helpful to us?
I have been saying this consecutively for 13 years.
At a past district, we were randomly chosen all the time, too. And I made a phone call and it went nowhere. So I said, hey, we're randomly chosen. Our eighth graders are overtested type of thing. Can we not be randomly chosen this time? And we were randomly chosen that time as well, so.
I think actually, you got to be careful. Because you complain about eighth grade and next thing you know, you get selected for fourth grade. You get selected, like, be careful, you know, what you complain about.
So Shane, yeah, Shane.
Thank you. So I'm supportive of the grade six teacher, because I don't love a class size of 25 to one for a sixth grade class. However, this is a little bit hypothetical. But if the numbers were to remain stable, kind of where they are right now, would that teacher slide into seventh grade next year?
So, may I?
Please.
So not necessarily, because New Boston, the New Boston students coming in, it's a lower class than.
Okay.
So, and we are, we have more teachers for that grade level, so.
So it could just be a one year.
Yeah, it could just be a one year.
Okay, thank you.
Laura, did I see your hand set? Oh, okay. Did you have any?
Good question.
Anyone else? Questions, comments? All right. I think we're good. Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right. High school.
Mrs. McCann, Mr. Gazon, Mr. Cowett, and Mr. McBride. And I believe Mr. McBride had wanted to share a few remarks before he hands the mic off to Mrs. McCann, who will do the budget presentation. Mr. McBride, and I would be remiss if I did not thank Frank again. A multi-decade high school principal is a rare thing indeed. And we continue to be grateful and appreciative for your many years of stable leadership, Mr. McBride.
Thank you. Mr. Balki, right back at you.
And I've done this, I think, for 20 years in a row. Is that, I'd be remiss if I didn't say how good Kim McCann is. I think you all know that. But I wanted to reiterate, she is the best of the best at Gostown High School and throughout the state. What she does with the Principal Association. She has made an incredible difference here in the state of education. So make sure we always take care of Mrs. McCann and stay out of her way. And I did want to say, Mr. Gazon has done a great job of that as well. Great hire. Tim is as he looks. He's smart. He's disciplined. He's asked great questions. He acts when he needs to act. Incredible presence. We are super lucky to get a sitting principal of a great school like Hollis Brookline to come to Gostown High School and want to be at Gostown High School. So couldn't be, couldn't be more fortunate. I have a spectacular team. And then my last shout out, Mr. Cowett, besides being a great golfer and a great basketball coach, he is a really, really good athletic director. And if there's a harder job in a school, I don't know what it is, besides perhaps special ed facilitators. So again, feel very fortunate. Year is going great.
Mrs. Kim McCann.
Thanks, Frank.
Steve, we're ready. Thank you very much. So as you can see, this is probably one of the larger increases that the high school has had in a number of years. The difference between our current budget, looking forward to next year, what's proposed, is over $800,000. However, when you start to break that down, half of that is part of the base. So those are our contractual obligations. Those are our default pieces. And so the new pieces that we're starting to look at are just under $400,000. But even within that context, 250 of that is the MST and CTE programming that you spoke in length about the other night. And 20,000 of that is facilities. And 44,000 of that is tech. So when we dive into what we're going to talk with you about this evening, we are talking about a half percentage of the total GHS proposed budget for next year. So just to give context with that. Steve, thank you. Our historical enrollment, as you discussed as a group Monday, in this district is an anomaly across the state. And we have remained incredibly flat for close to a decade now. So we are continuing to hover around 1,040 students. And that is where we have been and anticipate continuing to be for the next few years. Our class sizes are a little different than when you look at some of the other schools. Because as you know, at the high school level, student schedules are completely individualized. We build the schedule every year from the ground up based on student requests. And with that, what we've chosen to share with you, as we do annually, is a sampling of current class sizes across our schedule, across different departments, different levels of courses. And so you can see courses, sizes here are typically capped anywhere from 16 to 25, depending on the content area, the space. Some of our technology education classes are at 16. Our art classes tend to be capped at 18. Our science classes, the state requirement to cap those is 24. And these are tied to the physical spaces in terms of square footage and safety pieces that go along with those courses, as well as some of the specialized equipment. You'll see this year, again, just referencing the MST and CTE piece, we're at about 106 students between the AM and the PM sections who are attending for programming at the Manchester School of Technology. Our current staffing is stable. We have had 90.5 full-time equivalents for the last couple of years. That includes our school counseling staff. It includes our library media specialists, our school nurses. They're all under that GEA contract. We have 25 paraprofessionals supporting students in a variety of capacities. Some are one-to-ones, some are classroom paraprofessionals. This is our vocational specialist, who works with our students in our life skills program, as well as an LNA and a couple of registered behavioral technicians as well. We have six-plus administrative assistants. We have six full-time administrative assistants. And we have a part-time individual who supports our adult program. We have seven administrators, plus the gap administrator. And then we currently have eight full-time custodial staff members, who are part of our facilities team, as well as our grounds and our maintenance folks. Questions about enrollment or staffing at this point? All right, great. So the changes that we are sharing with you, that you're going to see as you go line by line through the budget, starting with maintenance, we have requests for a little bit of an increase in two areas. First, in our regular ed, general maintenance, we're looking to add back into that line $1,500 that historically had been there for the purposes of routine repairs and maintenance in our technology education classroom spaces. I think somewhere in the transition with positions over the last couple of years, in terms of supervising that department, some of that money had not gotten spent, or it had been spent out of a supply line. And so it looked like it wasn't money that we were using or needed. And it had come out. But really, we do have needs to maintain the machinery down in that area and have some annual work done on it. So we're looking to bring that back in. On the administrative lines, you're going to see a request for an increase, and this would be a one-time increase, of $8,000. So what we have found is with personnel turnover, up in our chemistry classrooms in particular, we have discovered, we have a number of chemicals that we no longer use. And this happens periodically. But we have stuff in the building that we do need to have professionally removed. We've had individuals come in, take a look at what's in there, and give us some estimates about the removal of those chemicals. And we're in a place where they're on a shelf, they're stable, they're safe, and they can remain until we're ready to get them out. But we are looking at about $10,000 in chemical removal and disposal fees to just clean that cabinet out and get it back down to chemical supplies that we only currently use with our students and with our staff. And then under the 442 equipment rental, we're looking to increase that by $1,900 to support increased costs associated particularly with creative welding. So there's two places where we're going to talk about that tonight. The first is the rental, because we pay a fee for all of the housing of the gases. So the other pieces we're going to talk about is the increase in the cost of that gas. But the tanks and the housing of those gases for the class, we have seen both an increase in cost and we have seen an increase in the number of students taking the class. So the need for tanks and gas has also gone up to support those students in the class. Questions? Great. This is a quick one. You had a lengthy discussion the other night. This is the 250,000 offset that we anticipate for career in technical education tuition. Is there anything further that we can provide, Shane?
Just looking at vocational tuition slash education. I know we got the number the other night. Do we anticipate that number rising for next year? Or do we anticipate it being stable? I know it's hard to tell, kind of, but.
It's really hard to predict. Part of it is that it's not just that there is X amount of dollars to support it and that the state can change how they budget that number. It's also how they distribute it across all of the students in the state participating in these programs. So there is an element of this that is also impacted by what's happening in other schools and how many students statewide are choosing to participate in vocational education. So the state says, we can pay and will pay X amount of dollars. But they're not saying that per student. They're saying that in total. And then that figure is spread out statewide.
Go ahead, Shane.
And the reason I ask, thank you, Kim, is because, I know the other night we talked about not getting the money from the state any longer and potentially having to cap the amount of students. And I would hate to do that. But if there's a huge interest and the money's not lining up, then the reality might be that that might come. But hopefully it doesn't happen.
Agreed.
Yeah, I was, I was just going to share that, to that end, I have asked the high school administration to start thinking about a couple of different models, that if we were not successful in this amount of money being put into the budget, or if the budget didn't pass and we ended up on default, that we may have a very real circumstance that we need to ration how many kids are able to participate in those programs. And again, it's incredibly disheartening when we look at, you have to understand that not every kid needs to go to college. And there are a lot of different pathways. And the trades are an incredible way. You can probably make more money as a plumber or an HVAC guy than you can a lot of, you know, a lot of college-bound type jobs. So it's unfortunate that the state continues to erode the money available for these programs. And this is a very real thing. They cut the amount of money. And then, just as Kim said, there is, and there appears to be, increasing participation across the state. So great. We need these trade professionals. We want people to go into these good, high-paying jobs. We want them to stay in New Hampshire. But yet, we're not going to fund the programs that allow these kids to have the opportunity. So it's unfortunate that we're talking about this. It's unfortunate that we had to put $250,000 into our budget. That's just to stay whole with the known numbers right now. That's not even increased growth. So disappointing.
Thank you, Brian.
Go ahead, Ginny.
Kim, just because this is a whole lot of money, could you list some of the classes that are at MST's to give people, like, a real reason that this is so important?
Yeah, so students are participating in programs that range from a three-year cosmetology program, where they come out certified, to residential carpentry, residential electricity, residential plumbing programs, design communications, business programming. I mean, it really runs the whole gambit. There's automotive programming, there are.
Mr. Gazon, do you have the document from Mrs. Mazzoni?
He's more prepared than I am.
Yeah. So I wasn't going to give this out, but I asked Melissa Mazzoni, our school counseling coordinator, to pull together some information for me. And Tim, I think, has that queued up.
Yep, so in addition to what Ms. McCann just explained, we have, I'd say our, it looks like our highest enrollment is the Cosmo, cosmetology sequence, of course, is Cosmo 1, 2, and 3. The auto tech class, very popular class. Looks like our electrical tech class, another popular class for our students. Collision repair is also pretty high enrollment. So the gamut's probably looks like about 25 or so classes. And these are data points that we can certainly share with the board if there's interest. In addition to our enrollment over the last 20 years, which peaked in about 2005 at about 125 kids. And like we said earlier, it's about 106 kids this year, so. So anywhere from eighty to about a hundred and twenty-five over the last twenty years is the range. It's also HVAC, culinary, there's a bunch of stuff.
Yep, firefighting, emergency medical.
There's also, there's different landscaping courses, hardscaping. They've got quite a few different options.
And there's technical options as well, video production.
There's game design, that's a new one.
Yep, yep.
Health science, HVAC, EMT, wide range.
Go ahead, Jenny.
I think the best part of this program is to, the kids that are really interested in those kinds of classes also have to take their other classes and do well in them. And they come out with a diploma. They've attended school, they know reading, writing, and math. So, you know, they come out as intelligent. They have a diploma behind them. Plus, they have a step into a career or a trade later on. So it's really important stuff for kids. And it's, these kids are not out trying to figure out how they're going to find this because school is not their big thing. So you're really saving a lot of kids, enabling them to move forward instead of hanging in school until they're eighteen because they need to and not being productive. And this way, they're productive, they're moving forward into their life in a positive way. It's really a huge thing, I think.
Yep. Thank you, Jenny. Anyone else for this section? Great. Go ahead, you can continue. Great. Next slide, Steve, thank you. So in supplies, there's a few areas. The first, technology education, the three thousand dollars is the welding I referenced earlier. And this is the expenses for the class that includes increases in the gas prices that we have continued to see over the last couple of years, as well as all of the little safety pieces, you know, replacement goggles, gloves, the tips for the welding, machines, all of that. There is a thousand dollars to go with the new physical education group fitness course that we have brought forward. This would be a one-time purchase to get that up and running. So exercise balls, aerobic steps, mats for the space, resistant bands, you know, small dumbbells, those sort of pieces that they would use in that class. The other thousand dollars is under the co-curricular section. We have started a chapter of the Best Buddies Program. This is an international organization. It's a nonprofit that is designed to promote friendship, leadership, and opportunities for individuals with intellectual and developmental disabilities. The thousand dollars would be used to both provide support programming that the group would offer here on campus, as well as potentially trips off-campus. And there are some training pieces that are available to our students who are participating through workshops over the course of the year that this would allow those students to attend as well. Any questions? Great. The next place is our print materials. Two of these purchases would be one-time purchases as we get started with the new AP macroeconomics course and the AP seminar course. The other portion of this, which is roughly seven thousand dollars, is an increase to support our Townsend Press series that we use for vocabulary programming across all of our grade levels, as well as a reading consumable text that we have started to use with our ninth graders from this program as well. You know, sometimes people say, why do you do vocabulary at the high school level? The science and the research behind it supports it. It helps students not only in their English classes, but across all of their academics. Regular vocabulary enhances reading comprehension. It gives students greater access to the understanding of the material that they are being exposed to across all of the curriculum. It is going to advance their writing skills, their thinking skills. And really, we know that when students can recognize words, use words, have strong writing skills, it increases their academic confidence as well across all of their content areas. And we see higher rates of success. This is a program that we've been using for almost twenty years now, very successfully. We had budgeted for, once upon a time, the books were eight dollars a piece and they're up to about thirteen dollars a piece now. And we have not changed that budget line. We've moved money from year to year to make it work as we needed. And our overage of, you know, books from year to year in the book closet has been completely depleted. So as we look forward, we know that to continue it, we're going to need to increase our spending a little bit as well. Under miscellaneous expenses, other pupil services, this is our graduation expenses. It's been fifteen thousand dollars since two thousand and eleven. And as you might predict, some of the costs associated with running that event have climbed. So we do feel it's time that we need to increase that line a little bit for all of the costs that are associated with having the event. As you know, there's a large police detail that's necessary that evening. The other kind of big costs are bringing in sound and audio support. St. Aids is great in working with us and scheduling in conjunction, actually with the Bo School District. They use the facility on the night typically after us. And we've been able to work with MFI, who comes in, and to split those costs across the districts as well, which is really great. So they only have to load all the equipment in once and we don't get charged for them bringing it in and then Bo having those same expenses. So we balance some of the expenses. And we've been able to keep it pretty reasonable, but we definitely are overspending that line. Anything else? Athletics, the only increase next year that we're looking at is a twelve-hundred-dollar increase related to the trainer costs going up. And that is the end of what we have, and we're happy to answer any questions. Anyone, questions, comments?
One more slide? Is there one more slide?
Oh, yep. So this is the facilities and technology pieces. So these are the same costs and expenses that you have heard over the other evenings related to the other schools as well that carry through.
Kim, I wondered if you'd speak a little bit about the money that we put in for GAP to support GAP.
Yeah, so as you know, we have seen a reduction in the availability of funds that are coming to us for the adult education program. And as such, Ashley has been working with Doug to outline what are some of the costs and needs to keep that program, at least at its current iteration, so that we can continue to provide support for... Really, it's kind of a two-pronged support system. So we have high school students who participate in programming that is offered through it. Some of that is credit recovery, some of that has been enrichment. Some of that are students who their schedules during the day may not allow, for example, their ICT credit or they're choosing to take a health class that's being offered through the GAP. So they're able to check off all of their graduation requirements. And then we also have true adult students who were non-brads who are coming back and looking to finish their degree. You know, we continue to talk about what are some of the best ways to offer programming to these groups of students. We have been doing a combination of in-person and online courses with varying degrees of success in both settings. And I think there's, continues to be opportunity to look at what it is that we're offering, how we're offering it. But I feel it has been for twenty-plus years a staple of what the school district offers and supports for this community. And it's our hope that we're able to continue to keep it moving forward.
So again, the increase in that, that would go to the general fund would be about forty-six thousand, but that supports a hundred and forty-two students, at least it did last year. So we're not, it's not forty-six thousand, that's going to a handful of students. It's forty-six thousand, that's supporting a lot of students as they need it, whether that be for a longer period of time to kind of get several credits through that or whether it just be one course that they might need to redo or do better on, so.
Thank you, Doug.
And Doug, can you just explain again the cut from the state and why we had to do this?
Yep, so the state had been giving Goffstown, as well as several other places in the state, aid or assistance for grants for their adult programs. So we had been averaging about sixty thousand per year, give or take a little bit more, a little bit less. So in fiscal year twenty-five, we had sixty-one thousand. The majority of that money was cut to less than about a thousand dollars would have gone to Goffstown. But then a one-year seed grant came in, which allowed Goffstown to have an additional twenty-three thousand this year. But next year, that GAP grant goes away, the seed grant goes away, and what's left is a small amount of money, which is kind of associated with Title II students, which we expect to be around, less than a thousand dollars. So we're going from sixty thousand, sixty-one thousand to one thousand.
Go ahead, Jenny.
I just want to like kind of point out, these, this kind of a program is really important because all of our graduation rates are in things like our school rating at all kinds of different things at the state, our NES and C. They all look at graduation rates. So if we have a kiddo who just didn't, was having a hard time and wasn't going to graduate, and we have a couple of things here that we could do to help them graduate, it makes sense to do that because it elevates our school's standing instead of just letting them flop. And just about everything you do nowadays needs at least a GRE or a high school graduation. So if, whenever we can do something, even if it's on a small project like this with a small amount of money, we should be doing it for the good of our kids, but for the good of our school district too. Because as high as our standings are, it's easier to get our budgets passed and those kinds of things too. So I think a program like this is more important than most people think.
And it serves the whole community. And I think that's the piece that is important to remember. It's not just meeting a need for our current students, that this is an opportunity for adults who, for whatever reason, whether it was a year ago, ten years ago, fifteen years ago, did not finish and are looking for an opportunity to do so. They have a place to do that.
I remember going to a party at a gentleman's home, and he was like eighty-five, and he was getting his Goffstown graduate diploma. He had left early to go and serve in World War II. And he had come back and done what he needed to do through GAP.
Yep, it was when Bill Ryan was...
Goffstown graduation diploma. And it was just a really cool thing. And I know that other people have come back and gotten their diploma finally.
So, Kim, from your perspective, this has been a multi-decade, successful program that's supported probably a couple generations of kids at this point. Boy, it's disappointing that the state would cut something like that, isn't it? You know, and so I recognize that the state makes hard decisions, just like we do at the local level. But this hurts kids. And it makes a local community like Goffstown, if you believe and you want to support this kind of programming, now we go from getting sixty thousand dollars to getting nothing. So, successful program, helping at-risk kids, cut. Welcome to New Hampshire.
Anyone else, questions, comments? Heather, the only other thing I'd add that we did not talk about yet this evening was the proposal to include a summer musical theater experience for middle school students. So the positions, you saw the two stipended positions in the budget the other night. And I would just say, you know, we have offered elementary and middle school musical theater camp programs, again, for twenty years. So if we talk about going back to the beginning of the GAP program in two thousand and four, it was Tess Marks was the first director, some of you will remember Tess. That was the first year we did musical theater for middle school students. And it was actually under the umbrella of the GAP. Students, it was a camp program, students paid tuition through the GAP. It was run through the GAP for a number of years. Then, you know, just quick context, so as we've seen changes, both in terms of how we can do things with money and we've had leadership changes at the SAU, it became kind of a standalone camp that was run, believe it or not, directly through the student accounts for a number of years there. Back in the day, when you could do that, so the money came in through tuition and ticket sales. We paid for the production and then whatever was left was split among the adults as their takeaway for it. Then at some point, someone said, probably can't do it this way anymore. And we started contracting the adults. We still ran the money through student accounts and then it was transferred to the SAU to pay salaries. In two thousand and nineteen, twenty nineteen was the last time we ran it as a camp, pre-COVID. We were working with Scott to make changes to how all of this was run. COVID hit, we went a couple of years without it. And then we have done now, three or four years, we've been able to use Title IV A grant to run different programs. We've made, we've tweaked the purpose a little bit, we've done different iterations of it. And they're a little bit, they may have said to us, it seems like you're running a middle school theater camp with a grant that is designed to be a startup. So I don't think we will be seeing grant funding for this to continue in the future. And so we are looking to build it into the budget as we have with the high school summer program. This is a great opportunity. We bring students in for anywhere from three to four weeks. They're here all day, it's a full day for them. They're with great staff, they put on a fabulous production at the end. And it does a number of things in terms of helping those students really start to set the stage for their transition from middle to high school. They get familiar with the building, the staff. And it also, you know, is a feeder for our high school program. So we hope that that is something you will be able to support as we go through this process as well. Go ahead, Rhett.
I've said this before, I'll say it again. When you go to any of the productions at the high school, whether it's music or theater, you can really tell. It starts at a younger age, probably going right down to elementary school, and it just continues. So I think it's amazing when you go to the performances, it's, the students are outstanding.
Thank you, Rhett. Anyone else, questions, comments? Brian, anything? All right. Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, there, I'd like to send everybody home. It's been a long week, they've had a lot going on. High school has had several busy Friday nights and they have yet another one coming up here. So they've got homecoming coming up, they've got a lot going on, they're busy. So I appreciate them being here.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
If I may, I'd like to just show what else is in your packets.
Yeah.
So I would again share that anyone watching this, that these documents are on the website and we've now started to post all of the materials that the school board is getting so that any interested citizens are able to see those and to follow along. Mr. Totten, I thought we'd just share what we have in the remainder of the packet, some of these supplemental reports from the state.
We can. Mr. Borjat does not have those for the screen.
That's okay, so I'll, let's just... Yes.
Go home, Stephen.
Is the process shutting everything down?
Thank you, Stephen. So just a high-level overview. So I just wanted to share what you have in your packet. So these are all state reports. So the New Hampshire Education Department on their website, every year publishes a pretty significant number of different district reports. And you can compare every single school district against every other school district. You can look at performance metrics, you can look at cost metrics, you can look at compliance, you can look at all kinds of stuff. So some of the things that we pull from this are just important to understand public education, how we pay for public education, and to have a good sense. So, for example, and I'll share this with the budget committee when we get to that stage of the process, in public schools, you can compare every cost associated with everything that you see. You can't see the same comparison for municipalities. So you can't look at, what does a DPW cost in Goffstown versus Merrimack? What does, how do police services compare between different towns? It doesn't exist on the town side, but on the school side it does. So a number of these are pretty important. So the first report that's in here is the average class size by district. So this just kind of gives you, you can see what the state averages are. And if you look at this, so this last report was from October one, two thousand and twenty-four, and the state average for the elementary grades, grades one through four, were fifteen point nine. Well, as you heard, ours is higher than that. Grades three and four, seventeen, five to eight, thirteen point one. I don't know how school districts have the resources to have class sizes of thirteen in those grades, but good for them. So that's the first report. The next report that's in here is, this is the cost per pupil. And the cost per pupil, I would just share, I think the board has heard me say this for a while now... And the cost per pupil, I would just share, I think the board has heard me say this for a while now, there are a couple of costs that are removed from this calculation. So specifically, any cost associated with a bond, with a building project, anything like that, those costs are removed. So if you're Bedford, your cost per pupil does not reflect the fact that they're still paying for their high school. That cost is removed. So some of these numbers are artificially low because they remove bond costs. The other cost that they remove is transportation. And I actually really support that because there's incredible variance between transportation costs. So think about the city of Manchester that has a lot of walkers, that they have people who live within a half a mile or a mile of a school. And then think about a community like Pittsburgh, New Hampshire, or another another town that's large, rural. You need to have a lot of buses on the road to be able to get kids to school in a timely fashion. So the transportation costs are removed from the cost per pupil. But I won't belabor any of this, but you can you can very quickly start to see how many school districts are spending north of twenty-five thousand dollars per pupil. You know, some are over thirty. There there's just, it's always, I I shared the other evening, I think that we should be proud on our return on investment. The fact that we're the lowest K to twelve cost system in the state is not really something to be all that proud of. Particularly when you think about a community like Jackson, New Hampshire. Beautiful. Who doesn't love the White Mountains? They spend forty-two thousand dollars per student. Forty-two thousand dollars. And there are other examples. Newfields spends forty-four. Pittsburgh spends forty-four. So there are a lot of towns that are spending a significant amount of money, quite a bit more than we are. So that's the cost per pupil reports. The next one is the equalized assessed property evaluation. I mentioned this on Monday evening. This one continues to be really important when you understand that about seventy percent of the costs of public schools comes directly from local property taxes. And in Goffstown, we have a perfect storm and a bad perfect storm. The bad perfect storm is we have a high number of students, we have a lot of kids, and we have a very small commercial and industrial tax base. And ultimately, what that means is we are considerably below the state average. So in the state, when you take the total amount of assessed land value across all communities, there is over two million dollars of property value behind every student in the state of New Hampshire. And this does vary pretty wild, you know, widely. So you might have a community like Berlin, New Hampshire, which has less than a million dollars. That's one of the lowest ones. But as I shared the other evening, when you look at Goffstown, we're at one point three million. We're just a little higher than Berlin. So we have a very low equalized evaluation per pupil, and this is one of the most significant factors for us. So I will just pick one randomly. Oh, let me look at, oh, Newcastle. How about that? So the community of Newcastle, beautiful. Who doesn't love the ocean? Great Island Common. They have thirty-nine million dollars of property value behind every student. I used to work in S A U fifty. It's a grade school district. I worked at Rod Junior High School. Those kids all go to the same district. Forty million per kid. Well, when you have forty million dollars worth of land value, you don't have to tax it at a very high rate to raise the money you need to run your schools. So this report is very important and is always indicative of what our what our ability to raise money is.
So the other night, we showed that Manchester had a higher equalized valuation than Goffstown as well. And a lot of that's because there's a lot more just industry in Manchester. But if you're a Goffstown resident, you've got great stores here, but a lot of times you're purchasing stuff in Bedford. You're purchasing stuff in Manchester. None of that dollars, none of that comes back to Goffstown. That stays in Manchester, or that stays in in Goffstown. So even though a lot of the purchases are outside of Goffstown, that money doesn't come back in. What it does is reduces, you know, the tuition for for Goffstown, I mean, for Manchester and for Bedford as well because that's where those companies are paying into.
Thank you, Doug. So the next report goes through, this is valuations, property tax assessment, and property tax rates of school districts. So again, you can take a look here, and you can look at what the tax rate is on the school side of things for every single community. So we've just listed that out for you. So that includes the local cost extended. So that's the next report. And then after that, we get into free and reduced lunch by district. So you can see the percentages across all New Hampshire towns. I shared that Bartlett is the only school that we have that is just above the state average of free and reduced, and all of our other schools are considerably below the state average. So you you can see these vary pretty widely. So, for example, in the city of Clermont, they have about fifty, or excuse me, forty-six percent of their students are on free reduced lunch. And then, you know, you can look at other ones that are, you know, below four, so Hanover Bow. So some of these have very, very low. So that's the next report. And then what do we have after that? Is that the last one, Doug? Oh, then we have average teacher salary for all districts. So the average teacher salary in the state is, it rounds up to seventy thousand. And you can see, this one is not in any particular order, so I didn't I didn't have Goffstown. Oh, here's Goffstown. We are just below, we're at sixty-seven and change, just below the state average for teacher salaries. I would again emphasize the importance of our teacher contract, our ability to hire, to retain staff, particularly in all of the very hard-to-find areas, special education, math, sciences. And the board will recall, you've heard me say a lot of times, it was only just a few years ago that if we had an opening at the elementary school, I would get two hundred applications. And now we're lucky to get five. And of the five, hmm, maybe they're qualified, maybe they're not, maybe they have a permission to employ, maybe they're still going to school, they're on an alternative pathway to certification. So the level of competition to hire and to retain teachers has never been greater. So all the more reason that we really need to take good care of our teachers. And again, as the board knows, the entirety of this budget that we brought forth was predicated on the premise that we needed to put our resources towards the teacher contract. That's why there are no new bodies, no new headcount, no new positions in this budget. Wanted to keep it as low as we could, knowing that we had the challenges with C T E programming, with gap funding, with I T, and with facilities. So in total, we really focused on bringing in as low of a budget as we could, which would allow the community to focus on the teacher contract. So with that, that's
Couple more things in there, too. One is we showed just a couple of years of where the C R F money has kind of come in each year, as well as what it's been expensed on. You'll see that this, though, goes back to two thousand and nineteen. So as we look to maintain what is, you know, the most high-cost buildings that the town owns, you know, there's things that we're trying to chip away at, and you can kind of see some of the bigger purchases that have come from that C R F fund. And again, we're looking to continue to chip away because the buildings, they just get another year older, as do some of the equipment in it, or all the equipment in it each year as well. The next thing you can see comes from the town reports, and that's an M S one. So that just kind of breaks down where the the town of Goffstown valuation comes from. So you can kind of see what goes into that, what gets deducted from that in order for us to get the final number that's used. And last, which is going to become more important as we start going more line through line through the budget, is the budget codes. So that's kind of how we talk budget, how we set things up in a way that's an organized way, which we can kind of compare mainly with other districts in the state as well. The good news is, is that the handbook, which was created in nineteen ninety-nine for the codes, is being redone now. So at the end of this year, we are told that there could be a new handbook, which will allow us to kind of all reset again. I think we're pretty close now, but like anything, it's it's good to have a reset as if you're talking about statewide comparisons. You can see, though, that when we talk about budget codes, we're talking about the grouping of several numbers. The first thing would be our fund, whether that be the general fund, food service fund, special revenue fund. A lot of times what we're talking about in these meetings is the general fund. That's our largest fund. That's what comes from the taxpayers. Majority of that comes from the taxpayers. And that's really what's going to the main operations of our school. So a lot of times you'll hear that we're starting off with an organization code that starts with a ten. That ten represents the general fund. The next thing we go into is our our location, so we can break things down, whether it be by district, or whether it be by a specific elementary school like Maple, or by the middle school or or the high school. So, for example, the high school is three oh five. So if we're talking about ten, three oh five, now we're talking about general fund for the high school. Next thing we go into is a function, which you can see if you're looking along at home, that the the list now grows. There are multiple functions that we might use. Some would be regular education, special education, legal, student transportation for regular education. So again, it's a way to organize the budget in a way that we can kind of talk about it in a way that directs people, and then we can kind of pull data from as well. Then we have the program, which, you know, if we're at a school, are we spending money now on math? Are we spending money on music, social studies, tech ed, health? So it breaks it down even more at a school. And then finally is the account code, which kind of goes in order. So as we look at kind of one hundred through two hundreds, those would be kind of salaries and benefits. So one hundred and eleven is teacher salaries. And then we kind of go up through other things, which could be audit services, legal services, tuition, electricity, propane. So again, it's a different way that allows us to organize it, but then also pull and sort, whether we're using pivot tables to kind of zero down on on what exact an account has been for several years, or kind of the grouping of the accounts. So as we go through tonight, you might hear, you know, that we're we're looking at location zero zero zero. That's a district. So these are great pages to kind of help people kind of follow along with as well.
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Doug. That's very helpful. Okay, so typically, we don't do budget line, but we got through presentations pretty fast, so you just want to go through a couple?
Yeah, I I think it would be, so a a couple of things that the board could consider. You could have any kind of general conversations about where people are finding themselves in terms of the proposed presentations that you've seen across the different locations. If there's any general discussion, and if not, I thought it might make sense to just start to get into our line-by-line review. The community, I think, is aware that the school board goes through every single line, every single page of our budget. And we evaluate them. We look at the actuals. We pay attention to what's up, what's down. And that's how we go through the budgeting process. So if typically, we go through, starting on page one of the proposed budget with actuals, there is another document that has notes on it. The pages don't line up, and it's thicker, so we didn't want to kill more trees than we needed to. But if there are questions about what particular lines are, or there are four, Doug and I can flip back and forth and try to provide a little more information about the notes as well. But usually, we go through the actuals. So and I would just, the last thing I would share is, we tend to review all of the actuals and look at multi-year trends. Are they, are lines being overspent, underspent? If a line is being overspent, we might adjust it up a little bit. If a line is being underspent, we might bring it down a little bit or eliminate it altogether. So if if a school is not using a line, we tend to, sometimes there might be a reason that they they chose to wait on something for a year, but if it looks like more than a year, we tend to bring those lines down. So with that, we would start on page one. Doug, I thought we would give the update on health insurance. So I shared with the board on Monday evening that we expected to receive our health insurance rates yesterday. We did not. We received them this afternoon. And it's not terribly great news. It's not as bad as it could have been, but Doug?
So we, for the budget, for health insurance increase, it's unfortunately, it's typically always an increase. The budget was eleven point three percent. So what we found out was that a lot of our plans were down less than eleven point three percent. But our main plans, which are kind of the drivers for for how we kind of expense it, was up twelve point four percent.
So it was slightly higher than we anticipated, unfortunately. So the five hundred thousand plus dollar increase in health insurance, five hundred thousand health insurance increase, is going to be slightly higher. We didn't have time to work that number out. That's going to take a little more time for us. But it was, what was it, Doug? The driver plan was one point one percent higher than we budgeted.
It was.
So I I think it's it's easy to see it's going to be higher. So unfortunately, that was not great news. But given what everybody who has school care has dealt with in terms of receiving unexpected bills, two million dollars for the Lunedary School District, million dollars for Clermont, we didn't have any of those. So even though health trust is a little higher than we hoped it might be, I think they are more stable than school care. And just the fact that we didn't have an increase this year that was unexpected is a good thing.
So we'll have the specifics on the twentieth, the next time we meet, we'll be able to talk about. Okay, where did that five hundred thousand, where did that actually end up?
Okay, perfect. So like Brian said, for the new members this year, I'll start with page one. If you have any questions on anything on that page, just raise your hand, and then I'll give you a few minutes, and then we go to page two. So I'll keep shooting out numbers of pages.
Heather, I'll also plan, Doug and I will plan to highlight some of some of the key things that we might want you to focus on. So we'll just, we'll provide a few highlights. So where we would start, so Doug, if you if you look at the top left, Fund Ten, that's your general fund budget. Zero zero zero, that location is district-wide. Function eleven hundred is regular education. And all of our lines that are between one hundred and two hundred are all salary and benefits. So some of this, as we know, about eighty percent of our budget is personnel. So a lot of this, you'll quickly see, is salary and benefits. And the remaining twenty percent of the budget, a lot of that is not discretionary spending. That includes things like busing. It includes things like energy, some of those kinds of things. So by the time you actually get to the discretionary spending, it's very small in a school district. It's quite a bit smaller than than one might think. So this starts with district positions that are regular education.
So we're at page one. Any highlights on here?
Doug, any highlights?
Yeah, so the highlights, the first number we see is up by a decent amount. And again, that that goes back to the I T increases. So as Stephen is looking to make sure that the budget kind of more matches the actuals, some things that got bumped up in that first line was an increase of seventy-five hundred for the security audit. So each year, he's looking to get feedback from an outside agency to make sure that we are kind of following through with best practices. And if there's anything new that we, you know, we're learning from that as well. Those security audits have become more in-depth as as security has become broader and more detailed. So the prices of those have gone up as well. So another thing is that some, for some of our systems, he looks to get, you know, kind of the free online system. So an example of that would be a ticketing system that they use for tech support. So a lot of times with with the free systems, though, you have to pay an additional amount in order to get some support of that as well. So if we had the tech, the ticketing system that was not free, we'd be paying probably more than thirty-five hundred. But in order to use it the best way, he does talk back and forth with that company that produced it. And there is, you know, so that's an increase of thirty-five hundred there as well, as well as as we kind of have our virtual stuff and other online things. There's engineering that we can do, and there's engineering that we bring in outside agencies to do as well. So we can see some increases in there as we go throughout the budget. The first one was here. It's engineer support for VMware and Beam, which comes from W E I mainly, and that was increased by twenty-five hundred. So again, right off the bat, we're seeing increases to I T, but for specific reasons that are either helping us stay more secure by making sure that we are understanding of our best practices or as well as making sure that we can support the products that we have.
Thank you, Doug. Go ahead, Jared.
Just to make it easier to say, third line from the bottom. I know that this is something you endeared my heart for, teacher substitutes.
Are you on page one?
Page one.
Okay. Oh, yep, there you are. Yep.
I know that we're talking special ed teacher sub salaries here. Consistently one hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars over budget. Do we have enough there?
We never have enough there.
And let me, because I know that we're only five to six weeks into this school year and this school budget that we're actually expending from. How are we currently looking? Does this need to be increased?
So we're looking okay now, but you're exactly right, Jared. We have historically overspent this line. So if I look at two thousand and twenty-three, we spent four hundred and eighty-seven thousand. Two thousand and twenty-four, we spent four hundred and ninety-one. overspent this line. So if I look at 2023, we spent 487,000. 2024, we spent 491,000. We have purposely allowed this number to be underbudgeted, recognizing that we are going to spend more than it's in here. This is something that we have tried to increase a couple of times in the past. It hasn't always been supported by the Budget Committee, but this is a line that we will overspend by probably easily 50 to 100,000. So that's something that we have, we tend to recognize that we have a fund balance at the end of the year. Sometimes we have savings that we don't expect, and we have, we have not increased this line. But Jared, to your point, I think the board, if the board wanted to add money, this would be the line to do it. This line is, is about 100 grand less than it needs to be, and has been consistently for years.
And a question might be in regards to the 2025 actual compared to 2024, that's actually gone down. That a lot of times has to do with the fact that, like other districts, we can't find subs. So a lot of times, if a teacher is out or a parent professional is out, there is no sub in that spot. So if we were actually filling all of our teachers who are out, that, that number would be more. But we do not see in the near future that we're going to be hiring a massive amount of subs. So I think we were able to hire some, but we did not hire a lot of new subs this year. So we don't, we don't believe that we're going to continue to be able to cover everything. So that's not just costs down.
Yeah, so if we increase it, it will still be a challenge. Finding people, finding substitutes continues to be a real challenge for us. But that is a line that is underbudgeted.
And it's never going to be anything that we know we don't have the money, but we're still going to hire subs if they're available.
We are, yep, yep.
Have to watch the kids.
Absolutely.
Yep.
So is everybody good with page one? Can we move to page two? Any highlighting on this page?
So this page is, we've got a lot of IT in here. So, yeah, we're looking at a lot of different kinds of IT lines. So that includes things like summer projects, rebuilding, all the different kinds of services that we use, such as antivirus, a lot of those kinds of cybersecurity kinds of things, different tools that we use. One thing that's kind of easy I might point out is if you look at the column, the second column from the right that says FY '27 new, that's where all your new spending is going to show up. So it's easy for you to quickly see. You can scan it and go, oh, you know, there's, you know, 10 grand, that's a new cost associated with that. And so it just allows you to kind of focus in on it. But you'll see on page two, there is no new spending, no new recommendations, nor is there on page three. Page three, we start to get into, at the bottom of page two, when we shift to function 1200, that's special education. So you start to get into all of our district-wide special education programs. And as you'll see on the bottom of page two, and all of page three, there is no new spending. We actually had some reductions in special ed this year for our contracted services line and our out-of-district line, which is, which are the two largest lines in the 1200 function.
So the out-of-district line, you can see on reference line 82. And since special education is part of an IEP, which is protected by IDEA law, it's under the default. So you can see that the budget actually decreased, and that's because we have less students who are out of district.
And that also includes a 5% annual increase that the state allows all private special education schools to increase their costs every year. So every year without fail, those numbers go up 5% at least every year, state-approved increases. It's unfortunate that our adequacy didn't go up 5% a year, but I'll trail off.
All right, so we can move to page four, if everybody's good.
To page four, you'll see that there is, again, no new spending.
Reference line 106. I know this is a sped line, but it looks like our actuals are under what our budgets have been.
So this is for charter school services. So this has to do with children whose parents elect to send them to a charter school. We still have to provide special education. This line is volatile. So one student moves in, or moves out, or goes in or out of charter schools, and it can have a pretty big fluctuation. But yeah, that, that line is, is a challenge for us to budget. And as you can see, you know, some, we've been kind of running in the, in 2023, we were just under 50. But with known students, we're, these are budgeted for known students. It's not, we don't budget for hypothetical students anywhere in here. So these are known kids, what we anticipate the cost to be. Sometimes, students might get a little less service, which might cost a little less. And sometimes, we're able to partner with school districts and realize some savings. So for example, as you can likely imagine, it's expensive to send, say, a speech and language pathologist to a charter school to provide services to a student. Sometimes, we can share those costs with other school districts that also have to send someone. So sometimes, it, we might do a little better, but sometimes it can be quite a bit higher.
Just looking at the past three years, where our actuals are 2/3 of what our budget is. So I understand, you know, and it's, again, sped is near and dear to my heart. But when we're consistently, for the past three years, 2/3 of what our budget is, should we be actually removing some of that? Knowing it could go up, but just like what we have for, you know, our substitutions, we'll have to make it work with some of the other lines.
Why don't, why don't I ask Mrs. Freitas to take a harder look at that and just confirm what, what we anticipate costs to be? And sometimes, so for example, we might budget for all the known students, but we might notice that we've had a couple fewer students. So I think that's exactly what we're seeing here, is that we've actually had less students attending charter schools, which brings the cost down a little bit. Sometimes, that could be a charter school student returned to our local public schools. It could be that a student went to an EFA. So there could be a couple of different reasons for that. Actually, it'd be good for me to look at that a little closer, Jared, particularly with the EFA lens for the education freedom account. So Doug, if we can make a note, we'll circle back to that line.
Yep.
Yeah, also 107 is very similar, same thing.
Same, exact thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, both of those lines together, we'll take a look at.
Okay. Anything else on page four? All right, we'll move on to page five. We start getting to athletics.
Yep, so there's a slight increase for athletics.
There's a couple of new spends, which we knew about. Sorry, Jared, I was looking at the lines.
I figured, you know, you should probably be looking at the lines too, instead of just looking around.
Go ahead.
Line 144, again, this is a situation where our actuals are consistently 2/3 of what our budget has been. I know it's summer school, but I would actually probably strongly recommend we reduce this line. I know kids have to make up schools, or there could be some IEPs. I don't know if it would fall under this line for summer school. But when we have a budget of, well, it was 45, then 30 grand, and 30 grand, and we're spending less than 20 grand, I think we should probably look at reducing the lines, and we have the historical and empirical data to support it.
Yeah, we could.
We could take a look at that. And as you mentioned, it did go from a budget of this year of 45,000 to a budget of 30,000. So we have dropped it, but we can look to see if it makes sense to drop it even more.
I would be happy making a motion to drop it by 10 grand.
Do we want to find out if that's?
Since it's IEP, do you mind if we find out first?
Well, it's, it's a 14-10 line for a function.
This wouldn't be IEPs, that would be.
Yeah.
So when these might fall under.
This is our, this is our summer school that we run at Maple Avenue. So what's happened is, is we try to budget knowing that we don't know what that number's going to look like when we're running that program the next summer. So making sure that we have the staff to be able to run it. I'm certainly happy to look at those numbers with Doug, Jared, and, and take a look at that for next summer again. But we did, we did drop it, but I'm happy to look at that again.
Because this, this is for teacher salaries, so.
Correct.
You want to make sure that you have enough teachers and then be able to pay them.
Yes.
Okay.
I would also be comfortable with reducing this. And then if we're seeing that we're spending a little more than that, then I would come back to you next year and bump it back up. So I would be, I would be good with, with a reduction there. I'd be okay with that.
All right, so we'll get back, get here back at the next meeting.
I mean, if, do we want to come back to lines?
The time might be too much.
Yeah, I mean, if we're talking about it, do we want to come back to it? Because it's just going to be the same. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, it's okay. I'd be okay with reducing it. I just would be concerned about reducing it by 10,000. I'd be closer to 5,000.
Five, that's what I was thinking.
I'll make a motion to reduce it by 5,000.
I'll second it.
All right, so Jared, and then Shane, any further discussion?
Hadn't we increased that line because we were having real trouble getting teachers to fill those spots? Am I thinking of something else?
So we used to have a flat rate. This was many years ago. We used to have a flat rate that all teachers made, but now they're paid their per diem rate for summer school. So that's what you're remembering, I'm sure, Jenny. And we made that change. Brian?
During COVID.
Yeah, during, it's been a while.
So during COVID, we used to pay, it was either 25 dollars, and then it went up to 30. And then when we made the decision to pay teachers their per diem rate, we had a much easier time finding teachers.
Right.
Because their per diem rate tends to be higher than that. And that was something that we supported. But even with the increased rate, I would tend to agree, and I'm okay with the 5,000 reduction.
Well, and that's, that's, thanks for bringing that up, because that would, that's my apprehension about 10,000. Because if you have some veteran teachers, they're going to be making more, which might skew things a little bit, so.
Okay. All right, so we have.
A 5,000 works for me.
Motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? See, and not follows in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining, we're unanimous. All right, thank you. All right, are we good with page five? We can move to page six. There is some new spending there.
Yeah, so we've got some guidance, increased costs for some of the testing that we do that would include things like PSAT, that would include AP testing, some of those kinds of things. The next one is IT. So this is non-capital software.
All right, we can move on to page seven.
Page seven, I would highlight reference line 211. There's an increase of 16,700 for our tech staff salary pool. We've noticed that we, we have wonderful IT staff, but we, we think that some of them are very valuable. They're all, they're all valuable, but some of them, we think, are a little low. So we've increased this to try to right-size their salaries and be competitive with some of the IT staff.
Go ahead, Jared.
Line, reference line 202. Looking at the professional program improvement, is this from any kind of bargaining unit?
So this is our, it is, because this is how we pay for workshops. So workshops for staff are covered under this. There's also another line where we have 60,000, which is the contractual amount that you're thinking of. That's for teacher reimbursement. Maybe we're not quite there yet. But you'll see that coming up, and that is in the GEA contract. But the one that you referenced is for workshops.
So looking at line 202, kind of the same scenario where our actuals have been considerably less than our budgets.
Yeah, unfortunately for that one, though, that, this one, I would be a little, a little more nervous and would want to take another look. But this is for staff to attend workshops. So they have money allocated in their contract that they're able to do workshops and take workshops. If everybody doesn't, they don't use it all.
So you have to have it in case they use it?
Well, I would do it whether the money's in the line or not. So if, if we brought this line down a little bit, and I had an influx of requests, we would overspend that line.
So I'll follow this up a different way. If this is in the GEA contract that's currently being negotiated, that line should be zero for this fiscal year.
This also includes GESS.
So how much of this is GESS? Because the GEA piece would be part of the warrant article. That would be approved by the voters.
It would be for new spending.
New spending.
So if there, if through the negotiations, we increase allocations or increase amounts they would be. But even if it's a line that's flat, that would still be carried, carried forward.
Fair enough. I would look at this line seriously because of the actual spends that have been done. I understand your point, Brian, and I will make a motion for right now, just for what you've said, but I will be making a motion on this.
Yeah, so again, part of our budgeting is if we have lines that are underspent, we should bring them down. And if we have lines that are overspent, we should bring them up. So even though this is something that is in our contract, if we're not seeing the realization that teachers are utilizing this to that extent, I'm comfortable bringing it down. If I have requests, I would still approve them. And then we might get to a point that we overspend a line, but then we just right-size it and bring it back up.
Right. Go ahead, Shane.
Without the current GEA contract in front of me, do we know what each professional's allocation is for professional development? Or is this just a pool that we have?
No, it's a, it's a per staff member. I think it's 250 dollars per staff member.
Okay.
For GEA, GESS, I think it's a slightly less, but it's a similar number.
Right. And my, my assumption, this could be incorrect, would be that GEA would be a bigger portion of this money.
Correct.
GESS.
Correct.
So I'm hesitant to reduce it, because at any given year, like you said, you could have an influx of people doing professional development. But at the same time, we can kind of do rough math to say, if it's 250 a person, how many people in that unit, right? Which I assume we probably did at some point. But the, Jared's right, though, the actuals and the dollar, the budgeted amount don't line up. But I do understand why it is like that.
Yep.
Brian, would you want to take a look at this one in more detail?
What do you think, Doug?
Yeah, we can take a look and, at it, but I can see why people would want to cut it as well.
Yeah, I do too.
I get it.
All right, so we'll come back to that one. So is there anything else on page seven? All right, so let's go to page eight.
If I can, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, nothing.
You already mentioned line, yeah, back on seven. You already mentioned line 211.
Yeah.
I just put a note there. That was in our package, correct?
Correct.
Detail, thank you.
Was added on that page. All right, so page eight.
Any highlights on page eight, Doug?
No, the new is just related to the salary. So it's salary, and then it trickles to benefits as well as whether that be retirement or FICA.
On page eight, right?
Yes.
Yep.
Go ahead. I knew you were raising your hand.
Line 230.
Yep, I knew you were going right there.
We're all going to be talking about this. I know that you talked about adding in 1,500 for the treasurer. Would that fall under this line?
It's on the next page.
It's on the next page.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
So we, we left that, we left it at zero.
So you can see the school board stipends, 229, are now at zero.
Yeah. And just for reference, this is for the note-taking that occurs at all of our meetings of line, what's in line 230.
That is correct.
Yeah.
Anyway, keeping up. Anybody else have any questions on page eight? All right, we can go on to page nine.
So your treasurer is on page nine. That's reference line 252.
I apologize. I had something on page eight that wasn't.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Sorry, no, it kind of came to me after.
No worries.
Just as I'm looking at this.
What number?
The line we just talked about, 230.
Yeah.
And this is kind of a question for our Budget Committee representatives.
He looked at you, not me.
You missed it on the.
That was how I looked away, like.
Is there any concern that the Budget Committee is going to look at that and say, we got rid of the school board stipends? Why is this here? Because I don't, I, I think you'll be able to explain it, but that's just a concern.
Jack will be explaining this one, but it will not be a hard conversation when we take, when we. It will not be a hard conversation when we take, when we say that this is money that goes to a very treasured employee of the administration, and this is for the work that they deal, and it's not an elected position. The key words here is not an elected position.
Yep, as long as you guys think you go with it.
And it's for after-hours.
Oh, yeah, no. I think it should be higher, but.
Is this, are we talking about the treasurer?
No.
No. This is note-taking. Yeah, treasurer's on the next page.
I would just, I'd just worry if they look at that and like, oh, what's the, you know.
Yeah, because it says-
There will be a question about it, and Jack will be able to knock it back really easily.
Maybe we should change that line.
If you want decent minutes.
Moving on to page nine, so you said your treasurer stuff.
Yeah, treasurer's on.
252.
252.
Should that actually read stipend, not salary? Because this is an elected position. Again, I don't know if the codes in the name need to be accurate.
Is there any way we can make that an elected position, so this isn't a thing?
I don't know that you would want to. I think finding a treasurer is a real challenge.
Okay.
And if you made it an other. What do you think, Doug?
Well, if it's, if it's, if it's elected, they're going to knock him on the stipend for it. So if we're thinking about a stipend, then we don't want to be elected. It's a lot of work to be the treasurer.
Again, I'm not disagreeing, but this is an elected position. It is a stipend. Shouldn't it be labeled as such?
I agree, it should say stipend.
Yeah, I'm just saying that the name should-
Can you change the word salary to stipend, Doug?
Or I don't know if it's regulated based on the numbers.
Well, historically, it's been in that line. We can, we're just partially waiting to make changes until after that handbook comes out. Doesn't mean that we can't, but we're already going to be making a lot of changes next year. So there's been a couple of things that people have questioned this year, and I said, well, let's pause until we get the guidance from the state as well. So we can make changes, but historically, it's been under, you can see that, that line, that 125 line.
I don't know if that's, the title has always been that.
Yeah.
Or if we should have the title changed to include stipend instead of salary. That, again, I think that's more of a technical question.
I think we're going to change the word.
Because we do have, we have the treasury district's treasurer salary, and then right beneath it is treasurer's stipends, which is zeroed out.
Which is account 127. The only, the only issue is looking back, you'd get zero from it before, and you'd have money on 125, account 125. So it's just that kind of looking back, looking forward, where the more we're consistent, the better.
We do that all the, we have done that all the time in years past, whenever we're doing transfers of money and everything else to be able to articulate this money has moved to this line, so I, I think it should be under the correct line.
So we can, we can move it to 127.
Because then next year, we're doing budget, we would just look at the line above, right?
Again, yeah.
Reta, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I just, I do want to speak about this line in general because it looks like we're putting it back in at 1,500. And I've heard over and over again about how much work is involved in this position, and if we have any desire to increase this. I don't know how we come up with the 1,500, especially given the amount of work that's involved, so I just wanted to throw that out there.
Okay, thank you. Anybody have any thoughts on that? Think about it, come back to it.
The actual was $500 higher. So if we don't buy the same standards as we want to reduce the other ones, then the standard would be to-
That's only one year.
Yeah.
I hire a lot of people, and the cost doesn't often go down each year.
All right, so are we good to move on, or is there a motion for anything?
So are we looking, for me to change the line to 127, account 127?
For two, line 252.
I, I think it's appropriate if we need to take a vote on it or it's an administrative update.
Move it down or just change the stipend from salary?
I'd move it down to 253 as an administrative change.
Does that work for you, Doug?
Yeah. I do appreciate that we have the $1,500 back in there. I know there's a conversation about the elected positions, but I think if you talk about like the school board or select board, you want to bring in kind of a broad, like a vast amount of different experiences, so you have multiple opinions type of thing. When I'm looking to bring in a treasurer, I want to bring in somebody who has skills. Because my, our, our goal is to make sure that the money is always right and that things are transparent, and that we're not the only ones looking at it, and it's timely. And, you know, having somebody appointed by the town to look at it as well, I think is great. When that person looks at it, and when they release checks, a lot of times it's between when they work and then when they have family time. So, and it's multiple times per week as well. So it's, it's a position which we want to have, you know, talent to. I'm not saying that people around this table don't have talent, but it's a specific talent that we're looking to have, and it's also a multiple time per week, every week, pretty much almost out of the year, where that person is helping us out.
Right, thank you, Doug. Go ahead, Ben.
So can someone explain why it went, it went up to 2,000 and then back down? Why, when did it become 2,000?
We would need to look at that.
Yeah, it says actual 2,000.
But it's also a very round number, and it had always been not a round number. I'm, I'm not entirely sure. We would need to ask Mr. Gross why that was.
And can I make a motion that we increase it up to 2,000? Or, I'm not going to ask. I make a motion.
All right, Reta, so you want to increase it to 2,000?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
By Jenny. Any further discussion?
I, just one thing, I, I'm going to vote no on this because I'm more aligned to get it back into the budget now. And I know that this is going to be one of the things that most likely will be looked at by the budget committee. I'd rather just get it back into the budget versus trying to increase it and get it back in the budget at the same time. So I'll be voting no on this.
Okay, thank you, Jack. Go ahead, Ben.
I'm just to add to the head comment. This position was not paid, is not getting paid now, so I have no problem increasing it. It's $500.
All right, so I have a motion, I have a second. Any further discussion? Okay, see, and not follows in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yay.
To abstaining. So we have two noes and the rest yes, so motion passed. Did you get that, Dennis? All right, so we're done with page nine. Nice, we can go on to page 10. Go ahead, Jared. I know, I was like, I better look up.
Well, I want to give you time to read too. Looking at reference line 290.
Yep.
Doug, what does this line entail? Because I know we're talking about administrative service salary pool. Who is in that pool?
Brian, do you have more of a specific on?
No, it's all administrators. So this, these, these, right, can we look at the, can you look at the notes while I'm answering that, Doug?
Yeah.
This is the salary pool that we use for all of our administrators. So any contractual, any raises for administrators are, are in that line.
So this would be dean of students?
Dean of students, curriculum, principals, all the administrators across all the schools. So just as the teachers get increases in salary, the support staff get increases in salary. The administrators that keep it all together also get corresponding increases.
Is everybody good with page 10? We can move on to page 11.
No, there was one more.
One more?
Question. As our good friend would say, inquiry last year. Reference line 301.
Yep.
Small line, teacher retirement. I know it's administrative services teacher retirement. Just looking at the numbers. Our actuals have been way under budget. Now, I know this number is small. But why are we keeping it at that number?
Isn't this the retirement on it, Doug?
Admin retirement.
This would be the retirement on any salary that's from, yeah, 2410.
Right, so this is, this is, if I'm not mistaken, this is the, the cost of the retirement to the state of New Hampshire based on the salary pool.
Yeah.
So the number has been way under our budget.
But so this, well, and, and some of this is going to be a little bit of a challenge when you go from one BA to another BA. It's, it's hard not to always have some of the historical. But line 290, as you see, had no money in all the prior years. So Scott moved this and separated what used to happen, what I believe is the case, is the admin lines, the admin salary pool and the IT salary pool historically were combined, and we broke them up and split them apart. So the retirement that you see is the cost of the retirement on the salary pool itself.
A little bit more than that, too. So if we look at, it's the cost for retirement on everything 2410. So 2410 starts with reference line 287, which are salaries. And you can see that we've had salaries in there since 2024, and that's where we have the lower amount of the teacher retirement on that. And then in 2026, what got added into 2410 was also the salary pool, and that's when you now combine the 70,000 of the support salaries and the 64,600 of the salary pool, as well as that 500 for admin services, other support salaries, and you do the percentage on that for the New Hampshire retirement, and that's why it's gone up.
And that percentage, Doug?
I don't know.
19?
19, yeah.
Somewhere around 19.
I think it's 19.23 if I-
Yeah, it is in decimal.
Yeah. All right, so is everybody good? Move to page 11.
So 11, you've got a couple of reductions in some of the IT areas.
So some of our communication lines went down, but you'll see several as we go through, as we've already talked about,
That went up.
At the schools, that went up.
Go ahead, Carolyn.
I've got 328. It looks like it's temporary help for facilities. We're just overspending a lot for the last two years, but we're budgeting the same every year.
So this includes our, we hire students in the summer, we hire additional people in the summer. So I think we've been doing more maintenance and more work. This was not a line that was asked to be increased, but clearly our, our actuals are quite a bit above this. So this, this would be a line that would make sense to increase, given our logic.
Do you want a motion? Do you want to do that now? Do you want to go back and talk to?
So I, in full disclosure, Mr. Loring is not here this evening. I asked him, I told him he did not need to come tonight. I didn't anticipate that we'd have a lot of technical questions about facilities. I, he was ready, willing, and able, so that might have been, he had been on vacation for a couple of days, and I thought, come into a school board meeting on the night you got back from a vacation, sounded like a tough, a tough ask.
What do you think, so that line?
We can, I, I, yeah, we can. Doug, you'll make a note of that?
Yeah, which line was that again?
328.
328.
Yep.
Yeah. So the last line on there, reference line 341, that's for our lease. So we have two lease payments now. The first one's been happening since around 2013, and that's been that $167,000, and that was for the pinnacle public financing for the Honeywell Energy Systems. And then we started a lease, for the municipal lease, for the EMC work, which happened at multiple schools. And that's going up by that $220,000 to get us to the yearly payment of the $261,828.83. So after that, this number will stay kind of stable until 2020, oh, 2030, because our last payment for the Honeywell is July of 2028, so that's, that would be the 29th school year.
All right, so is everybody good to move to page 12?
So there's a $4,000 increase for vehicle maintenance. Doug, as I recall, Randy had talked about just some older vehicles, a little more wear and tear. Any more specifics on that?
I think it's just more getting certainty of, there's multiple vehicles at, at some of the schools, especially our high school and our middle school. And what we're trying to do is we're trying to route all of the maintenance through facilities at this point, and not have it be kind of between facilities or the school. Our experts are in the facilities as far as what needs to be done, as well as if it's just a battery change, we should be doing that ourselves. So it's kind of making sure that we're accounting for all of the vehicles, all the things that go, whether that be the tractor, the mule, the lawn mowers, snow blowers, or things like that. So it's, it's counting for all of them now, and then increasing it. So not only do we have the maintenance money, but we can do some preventative maintenance on it as well.
And that includes, does that include the food services vehicle, or do we have that in the separate food services budget?
The food service vehicle comes, any maintenance comes out of the food service budget?
So if everybody's good, we can move to page 13, and about halfway down, we'll start Bartlet.
Yep, so when you, when you look at location, and you go from 000 to 101, that's the beginning of the Bartlet budget. And again, the first, well, we'll get, we'll get into it, but that's when Bartlet starts. You'll, I would highlight line 388. That is your capital reserve fund deposit. That's what that 300 grand is.
That's new for this year, to put this line in here, isn't it?
No.
No?
No, we, we, this is, I'm pretty sure this is how Scott's been doing it since we created it.
Because if we look at the very end, then our total line won't match what's on, going to be on our warrant article.
Yeah, it actually, the 300,000 is a good point. The 300,000 should not be in the default. That's going to come out from there. So I have to remove that from the default, because that would be something that is voted on in its own warrant article.
Okay, so that'll increase the delta between the default and the proposed.
It will, yeah.
No, it won't be under proposed. It's going to be an individual warrant article.
But if that 300 is included in the default number, it should, it should be removed.
Yes.
Yes, yeah.
But it won't increase the delta between the-
The spread will be the same. They'll both come down. Yep, the spread will be the same. They both correspondingly come down.
All right, so do we want to continue through Bartlet on page 14?
Do you want to try to do a couple elementary schools?
Yeah, we can do Bartlet and Maple, so next-
Maybe we'll get through the district. That's going to be the most conversation.
The district's the hardest one. The district is the hardest one. Yeah, I know, we, we've already had a couple of, you know, a couple of nights, but if, if you want to keep going.
Well, let's see how we feel at the end of Bartlet, and then try to finish up in April.
Go down to Tribe One Elementary School, see where we're at.
That's right. So page 14.
This one could be easy. You'll, you'll quickly see that there's not a lot of new spending. You'll, you'll quickly see that there's not a lot of new spending.
There's actually a decrease.
Yep, three thousand dollar decrease in general supplies. I did want to point out that I have not reduced any supply lines. So any reductions you see in any of the six eleven supply lines did not come from me, these were from the principals.
I don't know where it is on here. The one thing that Jack and I always hear is stamps.
Oh, yeah.
The postage meter.
Postage meter.
So, where is that?
Postage, it's going to be further down, it's going to be on.
There it is, it's on the next page, four fifty six.
That's the only thing I think I want to talk about. So there are, you're going to see, you're going to see more than one though. You're going to see it, I think for special ed, and then you're going to see it under the office of the principal, so you'll see it twice. And again, some of the requirements had been historically that you had to mail, you know, snail mail stuff out.
So with that, we can go to page fifteen, because some of those postage is there, line four fifty six.
I don't touch spat, so. I don't know what the laws are in the RSA is about what needs to be mailed for spat items.
Yeah, that's a big valid point.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, I see those little metered things used all the time to stamp off.
This, this would also be if you're sending things certified mail, return receipt requested. So this would have other kind of post office type functions, which we do all of those things.
Alright, so.
I'm going to assume we don't do them unless we have.
Exactly.
We don't do them unless we have to.
Sometimes hopefully that the meetings are working or the phone calls are working, you don't have to go to certified.
Well, but, but it's unfortunate that we do have people who are unresponsive and we have, you know, business matters that we need to attend to and sometimes we do have to do that.
Alright, so if we're good with fifteen, we'll move on to sixteen. There's a reduction on this page, no new spending.
So there's a reduction on this page, is there a reduction on the next page?
Yep. We can move on to page seventeen. Uh, this is insurance stuff for teachers, staff, benefits.
Yeah, so again, all of the one hundred and two hundred lines would be salary and benefits. And you'll see that it just changes function. So the function, when we get into twenty one fifty, that's speech. So then we initially go through all the salary and benefits associated with speech positions. So again, all the one hundreds and all the two hundreds are salary and benefit lines in that account column.
So we can move on to page eighteen.
So same story here, you get into the twenty two twenty two function, that's library and media. So you have, all of your one hundred and two hundred lines would be all the salary and benefits associated with our library and media professionals. And then you'd get into the, the other lines, which would include things like supplies, books and new equipment, media, different kinds of things that we buy for our libraries or our schools.
So between now and the next meeting, you can see like two eleven, which is the health insurance, is on each page either like once or twice.
So that's going to go up.
And that's going to be changed by, by different amounts depending on what they have access to, what they can elect, and if that insurance went up or down compared to what we projected it to be. So that's going to change this whole report, the final number. But I want to know, is the board looking to kind of have this printed out again, knowing that's going to be kind of changed?
For me, if you bring the new number up, that's.
Yeah, yeah, just a piece of paper.
I don't need all these.
With the new number, you don't need to do all this.
Okay.
I wouldn't even think that we need to have the articulation of those changes, because it's just going to be.
Just in the aggregate, exactly. Okay.
Yeah.
That makes it a little easier. And then when we, when the school board finishes your work, we'll print new packets with all the corresponding changes that will include the revised health insurance numbers when it goes to budget committee.
Right.
And at that time, we'll get you guys new copies as well.
Okay, we're good to move to page nineteen. This is all your admin stuff.
Yeah, so on page nineteen, you'll see the increase in voice communications. I think this had the corresponding reduction at some of the district lines, but these are what Mr. Borget is predicting for all of the, I think this included our, our telephone lines, our internet-based telephone services. This includes some of those other fixed costs. And you could, I mean, just take a look at the twenty, two thousand twenty five actual. So we spent almost twelve grand out of that line. So is, is this enough? I, I would hope so, Steven's usually pretty good about.
So our, the assistant BA, Heather Kelly, has looked at multiple of, of these bills, because this project to switch over has been very time consuming. And there's been things that have been incorrect on the bills that her and Steven have spent just hours working on with the company. But what she's done too is she's looked at kind of the reoccurring as well, you know, as well as, as the stable type of costs. And then we have like three-month averages and five-month averages. So what we're, we're really looking to do is hone in on what we believe the number will be. We had to slightly adjust it up for the middle school and high school, mainly because after the no cellphone ban went through, we added some additional landlines, because as school, as kids need to call home, instead of kind of texting home, they needed access to more phones. So we, we bumped up what our knowns or what we thought were our knowns were by a little bit. And we're really trying to get to what the actual will be on those.
Thank you Doug. Alright, we move on to page twenty.
So slight reduction in natural gas, I'm assuming that's you, that's based on utilization, anticipated BTUs. I would point out Bartlett is the only building we have with natural gas. So natural gas goes down a little bit, electricity goes up a little bit.
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah. So again, electricity, natural gas, propane, they're, they're never easy to budget for. Electricity got a little bit easier because we were at around that, that ten cents.
Per kilowatt.
Per kilowatt hour, and we're at that pretty much ten cents, nine point nine five for the next three years. So we were right around that ten cents, nine point nine five. There's a combination of two numbers last year. So we, we kept it close to the actual as far as, because our, our amounts are roughly the same. And again, that's only one aspect of our electric bill. There's the delivery charge, the stranded charge, there's demand charges. So just because our energy has gone up or down a little bit, it does mean that the other things can't go up or down a little bit as well.
And if we go to twenty one, halfway down is Bartlett, and then it starts at the Maple. And there's new spending.
Yeah, there's some new spending.
Yeah, furniture, replacement, maintenance.
I think the replacement equipment, was that a floor machine that this is actually talking about? And then the, some of the maintenance lines are up, and this is pretty indicative of just the increased general costs associated with kind of building repairs, maintenance, all of the different trades, et cetera. And then halfway through page twenty one, you're going to shift into Maple Ave.
Right. Maple's got another five or six pages. So what is everybody's thoughts? So the next board meeting, we'll have a school board meeting in the beginning and then.
We, we are, in fact, Mrs. Moran and I were talking a little bit just today. We're going to try to, again, keep the, the meeting as short as we can, any business that we need to bring. But then to just allow time for the ongoing budget deliberations on the twentieth.
And then we have. And then.
Okay, that's the theater one.
That's the theater.
The twentieth, think twentieth, jazz hands, we go to the theater.
Right.
Yeah, I remember now.
And then we have it also on.
I'm, I'm, I'm quite sure, I'll probably be sitting here by myself saying, where is everybody?
So we have it on the twentieth, and then the twenty first if we need it.
Yep.
So what is everybody's thoughts? Do you want to go through Maple and then start at the rest on the twentieth, or you want to stop now?
Let's bang out Maple Ave.
Bang out Maple Ave, alright, let's do it, so finish up twenty one.
So as we look at account four four two, which is on page twenty one, that's line six forty seven. You can see that those will be going up in, in each of the schools. So part of that has to do with the, the student lease of laptops. We saw that the teacher lease of laptops was higher than expected, which I think as, as we look at electronic prices, we weren't necessarily surprised by, but now that we know it's higher, we bumped that up for each of the schools. As well as we're trying to get to the actual for, this is also where our copiers and the toner for the copiers, as well as the software budget document for the, the copiers all live too. And we're trying to get those to match the actuals.
Alright, so we can move to twenty two if everybody's good.
I don't recall this one, but reference line six seventy six, we've got a ten thousand dollar decrease for books and printed materials, even though their actuals are right on budget. Do we remember why that is?
So Bill talked to this, so this was Bill Demers' decision. I believe he talked about that, when, do you remember that?
I remember it was.
But this was a specific decision that Bill made, knowing that they didn't need a certain series of books, or?
They had been increasing their books in their individual classrooms, so that there were more books there. And they felt that their, their collections.
This is almost cutting this line in half.
This was decodables that they were getting to go with some of their reading groups and things like that, that they built up their library. It was the decodables.
Well, it was, yeah, he put based on student needs.
Correct, it was decodables.
But we're going to have a new program, wouldn't we anticipate that we've got ongoing costs associated with that?
There will definitely be ongoing costs once we have, after we do the startup, yes, I anticipate that will be true.
I don't like cutting books.
For FY twenty eight.
But if this is what the principal asked for.
So I believe the first time when the program comes, and it comes in at a district line, or, or no? Or do you kind of separate it out?
For which?
For like a reading, when the reading program.
For a new program?
Yeah.
So you and I will have to talk about that?
Yeah.
So depending on the program, there are some pieces of programs, depending on what you purchase, you'll get all of your tier one, which is for everybody materials, and sometimes there's opportunity to buy some of those tier two or decodables that are at a, a different lexile level for some of your students who are struggling readers. Or on the other hand, for some of your kids who are exceptional readers that go with it. So we're going to have to talk about what that looks like, but it, again, it depends on the program that we purchase. But I think from what Bill was saying is at this time, they have a nice library of decodables that their interventionists have used, that they had been building up for years.
Okay, well, if that's the case, then we should bring it down. Our historical spending has, they have spent every penny out of that line, so.
And we'll definitely spend more on, on books in, in general. So even though we're seeing ten thousand minus from this line, we're going to spend around that, that four hundred thousand in books. So it will be a net increase.
For the new program.
For the new program overall, for, for K through five K through six.
And you'll try to get a lot of free books when you buy the program.
I'm going to wheel and deal as fast as I can.
Wendy shakes them down, it's.
So Jared, you had your hand up.
Yeah, just continuing the conversation, the thought process was we're going to try to bring in the new reading program this fiscal year.
Correct.
Correct.
And then those pieces would be a stopgap for next year. So even though that the principal said that we don't need it, we don't know if we don't need it, because we're going to have a new reading program in place.
Yeah, I think if, if, I might just ask Mrs. Kohler to confirm with Mr. Demers and make sure that she believes his logic to be sound, because there just seems to be a lot of unknowns to me. When, when you're buying a new program like this, I don't want to come back and find out that, oh, we, we need more money to, you know, purchase new series for classroom libraries, or whatever the, the situation may be. We want to have a low cost per pupil, but I don't want to take books away from children.
Right.
So I think we'll just have Wendy confirm that.
Happy to do that.
Thank you Wendy.
Alright, so we'll move on to page twenty three. No new spending.
So these are all your special ed lines.
Yeah.
On page twenty three.
Alright, we can move on to page twenty four. General supplies went up a little bit.
Yeah, I think this was a, a new request, as I recall. This had to do with, speaking of jazz hands, I think this had to do with show choir or show chorus or something.
The show chorus.
Yeah, show.
So that.
Oh, it was, it was for the licensing of.
Yes.
So the parents didn't have to pay for the tickets.
That's right, which I support. I don't think parents should have to pay to go see performances for their kids.
Yeah.
I'm glad to get rid of those.
Yeah, this is for costumes, sets, all of those things.
Yep. The music stuff. Are you good Jared?
Do I have my hand up?
I know, but you had, you had a look on your face, I thought you were thinking about something.
Memories.
He's got his budget look on, he's got his budget face.
Alright, so page twenty five.
I forgot where you got yelled at for last year.
So no, no new spending on page twenty five.
Yeah, it looks like a lot of benefits.
A lot of benefits stuff.
So page twenty six.
Running every big increase across from insurance.
There's no new spending here either. This is still more benefits stuff.
Yep, so all of your one hundreds and two hundreds.
So page twenty seven. All your media, this is the library stuff. Alright, we can move on to page twenty eight. There's one new spending with the voice communications, which we knew that this is same that we're seeing across the board.
Same thing.
Alright, we can move to page twenty nine. And there's the same thing, electricity increase, and then they needed new equipment.
Yeah, so the new equipment.
That's a floor scrubber.
Is a square scrub machine, a floor scrubber, which allows anyone over eighteen to use it without any additional training. So it's much safer. So it's, it's, so we're still having our custodians use it, but what we know is it's going to be much safer for anyone who uses it, which is always a good thing.
Would anybody other than the custodians be using it?
I don't see why they would.
Probably administrators would be the only other ones.
Yeah.
Alright, we can turn to page thirty, which halfway down finishes at Maple Avenue before Glen Lake. All right, so do you guys want to stop there? We'll do Glen Lake, Mountain View, and the high school on the 20th. And then you guys could go through if any questions and stuff, and then we'll get our answers back from what's been highlighted from tonight.
Yeah, and if there's anything else we can provide to the board between now and then, please let myself know, let Mr. Totten know. We always want to try to support the board with whatever documentation you may need, any additional explanation we can provide, that would be our goal.
Just to let everyone know, if they were to go to the last two pages, it, what it does is it breaks it down by location, whether that be district Bartlett, and it gives you the totals for each of those as well. And then it would give you the grand totals across each of the columns also.
What, what page is that, Doug?
So that's on page 59 and 60.
Last.
Oh, we're at the end.
Yep.
All right, so the 20th is our next meeting, we're starting at 6:00 again.
In the theater.
In the theater.
Six o'clock in the theater.
We won't have A and F.
Right, we have our S and E.
That's this, that's next week.
Next.
Correct, yeah.
Thursday.
16. Yeah, that's next week.
16.
Yep.
Okay. Yep. Yeah, that's at 6:00 on the 16. And then the 21st is if needed.
If needed, so we'll determine that on Monday, the 20th.
So something else that I might encourage board members to think about would be the deposit into the capital reserve fund. We would have some more time to revisit this, but that would be something else to potentially discuss on the 20th. Our recommendation is to keep the number at 300,000, but if the board wanted to talk about that number going up or down, we could talk about it on the 20th as well.
All right, and you want, we're still pushing for the 21st to be improving the budget?
If, if we're at the point that we, that the board is content with moving it on to the budget committee, that will allow Mr. Totten the opportunity to make all adjustments, make sure everything has been revised, updated, and then he has to do all the corresponding work, you know, in terms of the putting documents on the website, getting everything to the budget committee. So if, if we're there, that would be our goal, so we can get the budget to the budget committee as soon as possible. I haven't heard anything about their schedule or timeline. I'm assuming we'll be ahead of the town again because we're ready.
I believe we were with them on the 28th and 30th.
Yep, that's what it says on that.
So if not the 21st, it would have to be, I don't think we have anything planned with the school board after the 21st before the 20th.
We don't, so if we weren't ready by the 21st, we would likely need to schedule an additional meeting so that we could complete it and send the budget on to the budget committee.
Right.
Because that's, that's the 28th, you're right.
I think last, last year we did a meeting just to approve the budget, didn't we? We just had one meeting.
It was like, it was like a half hour meeting.
Yeah, it was something real quick. So I guess we'll determine how everybody feels on the 20th.
Yeah, and if we have to keep going on the 21st, Doug and I will look forward to that.
Yep, it's in our schedule. All right, is there any other business that may come into work? Go ahead, Brett.
Yeah, just quickly, because PNC didn't meet this month, we've been working on some documents and they weren't available at our last meeting, so I do want to share them with you just for your information. One of them is this, the budget process.
Oh, yeah.
I think, didn't we print copies for everybody?
Yep, I'm going to pass those around, so.
There you go. Those must be.
Okay. These are we guys.
Oh, thank you.
So the budget process, I think, is probably the more relevant one right now, and this will be available on the website. It'll be a great resource for anybody in the public that isn't familiar with the entire process, so.
So Doug, I was thinking we could just include that new handout as part of our budget packet.
Yep.
And then the other one is the, where is the other one?
Public comment? I don't know, but you think you want to share coming around?
Did I, did I?
We have sent them.
Oh, I, okay, I get them out of order. There you go. I knew I had a bunch. This is just an example of the type of communications that we want to have, have a library of, this one in particular is around public comment. Might be a nice handout if people are coming to public comment, but it, it would just be part of a library, and we have a number of topics that PNC will be covering. So this is just a sample and more.
Awesome, thank you, guys. A lot of work went into that.
Yeah.
Well done, Mr. Gross.
Oh, yes, Scott, thank you.
Scott has gotten very good at Canva. I, I do think he might have had a tutorial from his wife, though. So I think we might need to also thank Tammy Gross.
Yes, absolutely. All right, is there anything else? All right, so I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second, second, was that you, Vanessa? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained. All right, guys, good job.